I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz. Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Ms. Recker. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke. Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Before we begin the business portion of tonight's meeting, we'll have some student recognitions. I ask all present to value the procedure and decorum of our meeting and to be respectful of all. As a reminder, our meeting will be videotaped. Dr. Cates?
Welcome to all of you tonight. We have some outstanding students and coaches to honor this evening, and I'd like to call our Director of Athletics and Activities Eric Winkowski to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Cates and the Board of Education. As you can see, we've got a pretty full house tonight, so we'll get, we'll ahead and get started. Helping present the students tonight is Palatine Assistant Principal Michael Alter, Fremd High School Principal Kurt Teniper, and Athletic Director David Dick. We also have Hoffman Estates Athletic Director Steve Lackney and Principal Josh Schumaker, and then we have, oh, Schaumburg Athletic Director Marty Manning. Thank you. We'll start with Scott Hagel. Scott Hagel is a nationally certified physical education teacher from Palatine High School. Scott has been coaching a combination of both boys and girls gymnastics for seventeen years. His teams have qualified for the Elite Eight seven times, and in 2007, his team won the boys' state gymnastics title. Scott has been chosen Illinois Gymnastic Coaches Association Coach of the Year twice, including just happening this year for a second time. So Scott, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege to introduce to you Chris Lunsford. Chris is joined tonight by his mother, Betsy, and father, Hal. Chris just finished off her Markable Junior year by taking home the fourth place medal on rings. This accomplishment is a reflection of his hard work and dedication. I'm even more impressed by the support that Chris always shows his teammates and the other gymnasts in the gym at every meet and every practice. Chris, thank you for an amazing year. I am looking forward to an impressive senior year to cap off what has been an incredible gymnastics career so far. Congratulations. It is also my privilege to introduce Prakash Nigam. Prakash is joined tonight by his mother, Tammy. Prakash just wrapped up the most successful individual career in Palatine gymnastics history. The state meet started off a little rough for Prakash when he finished second in the all-around by .25. However, Prakash was able to use that adversity as motivation the next day to have the best day of gymnastics I have ever seen. The following day, Prakash made state finals in all six events. He took sixth place on high bar, won the fifth place medal on pommel horse, and took home four first place state medals on floor, rings, parallel bars, and vault. The Illinois gymnastics coaches named Prakash the Senior Gymnast of the Year based on his leadership, character, and dedication. I'm most proud to say that Prakash will be leaving at the end of the month for bootcamp to begin his career with the Army. At the end of the summer, Prakash will attend West Point where we will compete as a Division One gymnast and has plans to pursue a career in the Special Forces. Prakash, congratulations on all of your success so far. I know this is just the beginning of the great things you will accomplish in life.
Next, we'll bring up Fremd Gymnastics. Head Coach Tim Hammond is unable to be here tonight, so Fremd gymnast will be introduced by Athletic Director David Dick.
On behalf of Coach Tim Hammond, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, I want to thank Dr. Cates, the Board of Education, Mr. Kurt Teniper, for their continued support of Fremd Boys Gymnastics. I'd now like this time to introduce Eric Barnes. He is accompanied here tonight with his parents, Jim and Laura Barnes. Eric is one of the most successful gymnasts to come through Fremd High School. In his four years at Fremd, he has helped the team accomplish such achievements as winning conference championships, a sectional championship, and in 2016, Fremd's first ever boys gymnastics state trophy. 2017 added to Eric's successful career. He was a state qualifier in the all-around, pommel horse, still rings, and high bar. He advanced to the state finals on horse and high bar and finished the state meet with a fifth place medal in both the all-around and a fifth place medal on the pommel horse. Eric will be attending the University of Illinois at Chicago next year where he plans on continuing with gymnastics for the UIC Flames. On behalf of myself, Coach Tim Hammond, Eric, congratulations on a successful year and a great career in gymnastics at Fremd High School. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Barnes.
Next, I'll introduce Bob Hanson. Bob Hanson is a special education teacher and PE teacher at Fremd High School for the last nineteen years. In addition to coaching football for eighteen years, Bob has been the head badminton coach for nineteen years. His teams have amassed a record six state trophies in the past ten seasons, including state championships in 2007 and 2009, and Bob is also a proud graduate of Palatine High School.
Thank you very much. If, when I announce your daughter's name, could her parents please stand? This team accomplished, we had third place in state this year. We are sectional champions, MSL champions, so we had a fantastic year. Just before I start, it's my honor to announce these young ladies because they're not only successful on the badminton court, but they're successful with their academics, they're successful with all their clubs, everything else they're involved with, orchestra, debate team, math team. We miss a lot of practice due to those things, but I think it's important that how involved they are and how successful they are. They really mean what a student athlete is at Fremd High School, so thank you, girls. Now I'd like to introduce third place badminton team. First, we have sophomore Hannah Chen. Freshman Sharon Wu. Sophomore Shreya Prasad. Junior Jane Kim. Fourth place finisher in singles as a freshman Kelly Liu. Junior Leanna Begel. And junior Kate Bodensiner. As you can see from my announcements, I did not announce a senior, so hopefully we'll see you back here next year with the same thing, so thank you.
Next, I'd like to announce John Nally. John Nally has thirty-one years of coaching experience with twenty-nine years of coaching at Palatine High School. John just completed his twenty-sixth season as the boys' head track and field coach at Palatine. John has had twenty-two individuals and six relay teams earn state medals since becoming the head coach at Palatine High School. John?
Before I introduce my athlete that's here with us, I do want to say something about the two coaches following me. Coach Jones from Hoffman and Coach Akins. Coach Jones, you guys, just so you know, the MSL is only scored, placed in the state a trophy twice. 1959, Palatine got second, and 1997, Hoffman was second. They were three points away from getting a state trophy, and Coach Jones has done a phenomenal job the last few years with Hoffman. And the other person I want to say thank you to is Jim Akins. Jim is retiring this year, and if I'm taking anybody's thunder, I apologize, but for me, when I started at Palatine twenty-nine years ago, he took us under his wing, he showed us a lot of stuff. He's helped me as we've been part of the coaches' organization, and what he's done for track and field, not only in our conference, but the state, the nation, he's a well-renowned speaker. I want to thank Jim publicly for, maybe the last time, so thank you, guys. All right. Sorry about that, but I had a chance to say that. The athlete I'm going to introduce to you is John Ellischer. John's mom, Donna, is with us tonight. Also, as a track coach, and I know Ty and Jim can say the same thing, I have to thank Coach Hajek. Mark Hajek is sitting right here. If he could stand up for a second. Mark is our hurdles coach, so he's worked closely with John for the last four years. We get a lot of the credit as the head coach, but our assistant coaches do phenomenal things, so thank you, Mr. Hajek. John plays fifth in the intermediate hurdles this year, or setting a school record in the state finals, so he saved his best race for last, which is really great. He ran thirty-eight fifty-five, which is pretty fast, as Jaden will be up here, but he can tell you, a little bit faster. But John, the best thing I can do for him is I'm going to read something that Coach Hajek wrote. So Coach said, "Over the past four years, John has left a mark on the program that will never be forgotten. From school records to putting his name throughout the school all-time lists in seven different events. For any other athlete, these achievements would represent an outstanding high school career. However, John's been able to add two state qualifying performances and has been able to do what no other PHS athlete has done, and that's place in the 300 intermediate hurdles. Achievement alone doesn't do John's legacy justice. Despite his amazing achievements, he's one of the most humble athletes to be part of Palatine track and field. His dedication to perfecting his technique in all aspects of a workout was unparalleled. John's approach and dedication to the sport earned him team MVP. He was also the Palatine Relays MVP, and he will be continuing at U of I where he will continue with track and field to continue to perfect his craft." John Ellischer, thank you.
And next, we will introduce Jim Akins for the last time at a board meeting here. Jim has coached the track and field team at Fremd High School for thirty-two years. He has been the head boys' coach since 1990. In that time, his teams have won or shared nine Midsuburban League titles. The Vikings have amassed sixty-one individual and relay conference champions. Fremd has also captured eight sectional titles, including this year. At the state meet, the Vikings team has earned two fifth-place finishes and have finished in the top ten four times. They have hauled in a total of forty-two state medals, with three titles coming in the shot and one in the discus, which is the discipline that Mr. Akins coaches directly, and they've had two in the pole vault. I don't think he coached the pole vault, do you, Jim?
I did one year.
Okay. And Coach Akins is also a member of the Illinois Track Cross Country Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Jim?
I'd thank Coach Nally. That's very kind of you, John. Thank you. Appreciate that. First, we introduce our four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay team, and this team ended up taking ninth in state overall with a time of 7:51.48, which is number two in all-time at our school. And they were also conference champions, sectional, yeah, I want to face the, face the board, there we go, sectional champions and conference champions as well. And first, I'd like to introduce Luke Volgusang. He's a senior with his mom and his dad, Amy, and Carl Volgusang. Please stand up. Next, I'd like to introduce Jack Boobin, and Jack with his parents Greg and Patty Boobin. Please stand up. And next is Ed Wertham, who is our only junior of this group, and with his mom Beth Wertham. And then last but not least is Danny Peterson, and Danny is a senior with his parents Barb and Jeff Peterson. These four individuals, I remember them, they were freshmen, and I told them at that time, they were going to make some history at our school, and they have. And, well, except for Ed, because he's a junior. But, yeah, you weren't with them. But they were an amazing group. I coached them in cross country as well. They're a pleasure. And Danny's going to compete in track and field and cross country at Marquette University this coming year. They're a fine group of men, and they're going to be missed. Thank you, guys. Next is our athlete, Jaden Jackson. Jaden, come on up, and he's there with his mom Kathy Jackson. And you know, you talk about the bond that is created with an athlete and a coach, you know, with John's coach here, and also Jaden's event coach, Joe Sabajedney is here. Joe, stand up, please. And they worked closely with John. But Jaden is a fine young man, both as a person and as athlete, just well as all these young men are. But he earned a, he was the school record holder, running also his best race at the finals in the state meet with 38.06 seconds. He was sectional champ, conference champ, and then second in the state of Illinois. And only a junior? We'll see what goes on next year, right? All right. Congratulations. And next is Ethan Hansen, and Ethan is here with his mom Mary and his dad Bob Hanson. And a friend we have, we have quite a history of throwers, and I think yours is fourth best? Fourth best in school history with, I think we have six or seven guys over sixty feet. And he was also conference champion, sectional champion, and second in the state, which almost any other year would have won the state championship. So he's, he was a, I worked with him personally, and it was an honor to coach him, and he's going to be continuing his track and field career at the University of Missouri. Congratulations, Ethan.
Tyrone Jones is in his tenth year as the head track and field coach at Hoffman Estates High School. This year, the Hoffman Estates Hawks created some unforgettable memories for Coach Jones and the Hoffman Estates community. Coach Nally talked a little bit about that, but I'm going to let Tyrone come up here and talk a little bit about his athletes and some of those memories. Tyrone?
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. It's an honor to be here, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge just what Coach Nally said. Thank you for doing that. And Coach Akins, thank you so much just for the years of, even though we were competitors, he was just a mentor to me and taking me under his wing, and so I just really appreciate him reaching out and just showing forth guidance and going the extra mile. So thank you, Coach Akins. You will definitely be missed. So to talk about the Hoffman Estates Hawks, what a year it was. We were just in a nail-biter every championship meet, and we were able to pull it through. These guys that I'm going to talk about tonight were just part of a groundbreaking season, and they left a tremendous impact, not just on the MSL, but the track community throughout the state. We were indoor champs, the first since 1983. We were outdoor champions, both in our division as well as conference, the first since ninety-eight. We were sectional runner-ups, but we also came back that following week and were fourth in state, and so just a tremendous season, and it was just a roller coaster ride and a lot of fun, to say the least. And so very proud to bring these young men before you tonight. The core group is the four that I'm going to mention, and that's our four-by-two-hundred relay team. I'm going to go ahead and call them up. Declan Ruste, Nigel Jones, Danny Benahan, and Dylan Cruiser. So our eight-hundred relay team, they started off indoor by coming to the MSL meet and setting the record, breaking the MSL record, and running that time was tremendous, but they weren't finished. They came back the following week at our unofficial indoor state meet and placed third, and continued on outdoors where they were sectional champions and conference champions. And then at state, they broke the school record, so they saved their best for last. That's one resounding thing that you'll hear throughout this night, that our kids set their best for last, and these guys did so, and came this close to winning a state championship with five one-hundredths of a second away. It was, it was a race for the ages, but we competed well and left it all out there, and so very proud of these four, four men, and I want to recognize their parents. Danny Benahan, his parents are here, Brian and Jill, please stand. Declan's parents, there's Jonathan Ruste and Shannon O'Neil, please stand. Dylan Cruiser is, his parents are Tim and Nevada, please stand. And Nigel Jones' mom is Jaclyn Brown, please stand. So we'll miss our two seniors, Danny and Dylan. They'll be staying home here at Harper, running there, and looking forward to joining Coach McNeider, but we have two also coming back, Declan and Nigel, and so we'll see what awaits for us next year. Four-by-two team. Next up is our high jumper extraordinaire Finn Alade. Finn is accompanied tonight by his dad, Olah Akun Tumbo. Please stand. One word to categorize Finn was resilient. He was injured last year and came back towards the end and ended up qualifying for state, and just to come back from an injury like that spoke a lot about his character, and so you could tell this year he came in with a chip on his shoulder and he had something to prove, and did he. He, he ended up taking eighth at state outdoors, ended up placing fifth indoors, and really did a good job of just anchoring our vertical jumps team. He also provided strength for us in the hurdles, and he's going to continue on. His best days of track and field are ahead of him. He's going to be continuing on doing track at William Penn in Iowa next year, and so we're just excited for him and just thankful for his contributions to our, to our team and our school for the past four years. Thank you, Finn. Okay, all right. And last but not least, we want to recognize, Declan, come on back. Declan had another amazing year. He, let's see, he started off by just finishing last year as third as a sophomore and ninth and, third in the hundred and ninth in the 200, and so he, he didn't finish the 200 like he wanted to, and so we kind of used that as motivation. And so this year, he came back on just a man that was on a mission. He set records again, broke his own records as a sophomore, set them again in 100, 200, and 400, as well as indoor in the 55, 200, and 400. And so he owns already five of the six Hoffman Estates varsity records. Arguably, he's one of the best sprinters in this area, definitely one of the best in Hoffman Estates history. And so he wasn't finished. He then went to conference, and at conference, he won the 100-meter dash, the 200-meter dash, and the 400-meter dash, and John and Jim and all the track coaches can tell you how tough a feat that is. But in order for us to become conference champions, the most impressive thing about Declan, he wants to put the team in front of his individual needs. He's like, "What, Coach, what do we have to do to put the team? Whatever we can do, I'm for that, even if it means I don't get the individual success." And so I really appreciate that about him. He's a very humble and hungry, hungry at what he does. And then at sectionals, he came back and again did the same thing with sectional champion in 100-meter dash and 200-meter dash, and then at state, kind of going underneath the radar, even though he was third as a sophomore. More people were getting the attention, but he kind of used that as his advantage and just ran just amazing times and was state champion in 100-meter dash, and then he saved his best for last on his seventh race of the day. To me, that's probably most, his most impressive race of his career up to this point. He was tired, it was hot, but he somehow dug deep and ran against guys that were fresh and ended up running his fastest time ever in the 200-meter dash, breaking the school record in 200 and winning the state championship in 21:57. The one and only Declan Ruste. Thank you.
Kristin Zomer is in her first year as the head track and field coach, cross country coach, and special education teacher at Schaumburg High School. Kristin ran track and cross country at Illinois State University, earning All-American honors in the 3,000-meter steeplechase in 2013 and 2014. Kristin?
First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Cates for having us here tonight, and I'd also like to thank the support of Mr. Manning and all my help, his help this year with learning how to coach in my first year of coaching track and cross country. The first athlete I'd like to introduce is Madison Morosco. Madison is here tonight with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Morosco. This year, Maddie ran a lot of different events throughout the year. We kind of had some trouble deciding what events for her to do. She's a distance runner and mainly ran like the 800 and the mile. When it came to outdoor season, she pretty much won every single race she was in, and then by sectionals, we had to make a decision between the 800 and the mile. We ended up picking the 800, and she ran a 213 at sectionals to be sectional champion. That was her best time of the season, just missing our school record. Madison's a junior, so we're hoping that maybe next year she can get it, 212. And then also, she, they, she qualified in the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay team with the other three girls standing over there, who I'll introduce in a moment. But, so at state, Maddie ran the four-by-eight and the 800. So it ended up being four races total, if you do prelims and finals, on Friday and Saturday, and she ended up when, or placing fifth in the 800-meter run, and she was like the only girl who was running multiple events. So to be fifth overall, coming in ranked second, but having to run multiple things is a really remarkable thing, and Maddie worked very, very hard this year, so we're really proud to have her. Now I'd like to introduce the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay team. We have Madison Morosco, junior, Rachel Vaccaro, junior, here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Vaccaro. We have senior Valerie Shackleton, here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Shackleton. And last but not least, Lauren Kubinsky, a junior, here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Kubinsky. These young ladies really had a special season, and this is a group I will always remember, especially being my first ever group, so it was really fun to work with them. Indoor season, we already had qualified, we already hit the time to qualify for state in the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay, so we knew that we could do it. They qualified last year as well, so we already were planning on trying to make it down this year and be in the top nine, which is all-state. They worked really, really hard. And then outdoor season, they, I don't think lost any, they didn't. They didn't lose any four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay teams until state. They were conference champions, sectional champions, second, or first, no, second in their prelims, and then ended up ninth at the state meet. So they really did a remarkable job. We had to deal with many different injuries and things like that over the year, and they just worked really hard and overcame all those challenges, and I'm proud of them to be up here today. So thanks, girls.
Kirk McNeider has been teaching English and coaching track and cross country at Hoffman Estates High School for the last fourteen years. He has spent the last three of those years as the head girls' track coach, and Kirk is also a proud graduate of Schaumburg High School. Kirk?
Last but not least here for you guys, and I appreciate everybody's attention, and before I introduce these girls, I wanted to mention that being a member of the 211 family for all of us is something that we're always very proud of in our competitions, and even though we're fierce competitors at the state level, there's 738 or plus, you know, schools in the IHSA, we're always in the largest classes, and our athletes are the best in the very state, you know, in the state of Illinois, which is also a national ranking. You know, all these athletes are national caliber kids, and so sometimes I think that gets just lost, you know, we're just also used to being successful, and it's wonderful. These kids are just tremendous from all of our schools. For my girls here, there's actually two relays represented. So Monrea Wilson is a senior that's not here tonight, and she was a varsity athlete in two other sports, volleyball and basketball. Janay Dean is a freshman, and so to be a freshman and be all-state is a tremendous honor, and so she's not here as well. The relays that were all-state is the first time in school history that the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay was all-state, so that's something I'm very proud of. I have family that was part of the first graduating class of Hoffman Estates High School. My Uncle Dave is still part of the top ten on that team, so there's a lot of family, you know, history with both schools, Schaumburg and Hoffman, and so that was, that was something that we've been working for, for a long time. Last year, three of these four girls ran in that state finals, and they were eleventh and pretty disappointed to not come home with hardware after that season. And so they came back with a vengeance, and we were patient all season. After fifteen years of coaching, I'm proud to say that I've learned how to be patient. After 15 years of coaching, I'm proud to say that I've learned how to be patient. And so we didn't win things, like, you know, like, we didn't win, you know, we weren't conference champs, and we won some good things, but we didn't put it together until we wanted to. And at prelims, we were confident that we would make it to finals. And the day of finals, it was rainy, and there was delays, and we were sitting in the van, just kind of relaxing, and I sent a text and I said, "Let's go." And they came out of the van and warmed up, no big pep talks, I said, "Go do your thing." And they were fifth in state with just tremendous, tremendous teamwork. The 4x4 then is the last event, so the 4x8 is first, and then two of these girls had to, you know, sit around all day at the state meet, last race of the season. People were getting ready for prom, you know, so they had to stay off their phones, which I asked them to do and stay focused. They did that. Seniors, you know, they're done with high school at that point in time, and they're just staying focused for the 4x4. And they had made it through to finals, obviously, and they came out, and they did it. And they were sixth place, all-state, and that's the first time that the 4x8's been all-state since 1980. So both of these relays to be all-state on the same day at the state meet has never happened in school history either. And so we're pretty proud of a school of about 1,800 kids to get those kids together down at the state meet and run into all the big dog schools and bring home medals. So very, very proud of these girls. First, just to say a couple of brief words about each one of them, because they deserve it, is my team captain, and she's a junior, Allison Schrader, and her parents are here as well, Mr. and Mrs. Schrader. All my girls are very high-level students. Allison's heavily involved with engineering at school. Wonderful, wonderful young lady. Our team captain is a junior, speaks volumes. Her father is a Hoffman Estates graduate as well, so this is my first time coaching second-generation kids, which I love as a 211 grad. So Allison did a wonderful job. It's her second time in the state finals. She's now an all-state athlete, being recruited nationally, and a wonderful student as well. So congratulations, Allison. Next up is senior Misba Bagh and her mother, Mrs. Bagh. Misba, I could write a book about each one of these kids and talk your ear off, I'll try not to do that. But Misba is a wonderful success story. Last year at varsity conference, she was dead last in the 2-mile, which was just what she could do at that time. And I even had some of the girls on the team say, "Why is Misba running the varsity 2-mile?" And I said, "For a reason," because she needed the experience, she needed the pressure. And she was patient all season. She missed qualifying in the mile by, what was it, 4/100ths? She was, if the line was here, she would have qualified, the line was here. She got outleaned. I wasn't worried about it at all because I had plans for her to come into the relay. And she came into the relay, did a wonderful, wonderful job, ran the middle leg for us, battled tremendously. She got scholarship offers all in the last month of the season, turned them all down to go to Harper because she wants to be a nurse, and she knows that that's the right decision for her, so she's going to run for my father at Harper, and I'm very, very proud of that. Like, I love that she has the maturity to go, "No, I don't need to go away. I don't need to take a scholarship to go somewhere where I know nobody. I'm going to stay home, I'm going to take care of my family, and I'm going to pursue my dreams here." So senior Misba Bagh, wonderful career. Next up, both these girls were in the 4x800 and the 4x4, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. This is sophomore Anna Miller and her parents, her father's here, Mr. Miller. Anna, as a sophomore, is a high-level, nationally-ranked soccer player as well, so she's a very, very busy young lady, an advanced placement student. Her mother also went to Hoffman Estates High School and was part of the state championship cross-country team in 1987. So she brought me, she said, "I have a uniform." I was like, "That's so cool." So I was very excited to see that. Anna ran just tremendous races all season. She ran 215 in the 800 at the state meet, she ran a 58-second quarter at sectionals, which is just blazing for girls. She's got a very, very bright future. She was our anchor, which is, you know, so she's going last, all the pressure's on her. My favorite moment of the state meet for Anna, I think, was in prelims, in the 4x4. She made up a lot of ground, and we wear special checkered uniforms so that everybody can see us, and on purpose, because we could never find our own teammates, and so I was like, "We need checkers." And so the announcers know that it's Hoffman coming down the track, and so Anna's blazing down the backstretch, and the announcer to 10,000 people goes, "I know who that is, that's Anna Miller." And the crowd's cheering, and it was very exciting, a cool moment for her. But she did a wonderful job, she's got a very, very, very bright future. So congratulations, two-time all-state athlete. And last up here is senior Katie Bonney. Katie has run in three state meets for me, this is her first time being all-state, and now she's a two-time all-state athlete. She's going to continue her running career at North Central College, which is also my alma mater, and she's going to run for them. She wants to become a science teacher at the high school level, so say hello. She's a homegrown kid, too, so she is very proud to go into secondary education, I'm very proud of her as well. She came a long way, like many of my athletes, she didn't come out her freshman year, which we haven't solved that puzzle, why that so, but I get a lot of kids as sophomores, and I remember her coming out and thinking, "She could be good." She walked her first practice for us, and we worked through those types of aches and pains and turned her into a nationally-ranked, high-caliber athlete. She's a stud. She ran 58 seconds flat in the 400, the leg of the 4x4 at the state meet was a total rock, led us off in the 4x8 battling for the lead two days in a row, never blinked. And so I'm very, very, very proud of this young lady. She's seen it all, she's seen ups and downs, and she always ends on the upside. All these girls got faster as the season went on, and both teams ended the state meet with their fastest times of the year, and it was number two for both teams all-time, and Katie's a huge part of that. She's all over our record board, so we're going to miss her dearly. Thank you very much for your time and support.
There are numerous characteristics that are the qualities of a great coach, and I've asked to name a few. One might include concern and compassion, communication, education, organization, commitment, dedication, and the ability to push student-athletes to their limits while supporting them in every step along the way. These qualities are found among successful coaches, many of whom we've seen tonight. And this evening, we are also pleased to recognize two high school District 211's best coaches who have recently been inducted into the Softball Coaches Hall of Fame. First, I'd like to recognize Coner High School girl softball coach Kathy Ann Smith. Unfortunately, at the last minute, both of these coaches were called away, and Kathy Ann is now coaching her son's baseball game. She got called in to coach, he has a high-level baseball team, and they needed her. So Kathy Ann is not here. She's been involved in softball since the age of 12, when she played in the Schaumburg Athletic Association's program. A Schaumburg High School graduate, she led her Saxon team to a regional championship in 1990. She continued playing softball in college at both Grand Valley State University in Michigan and Illinois State University in Normal, where she earned her bachelor's degree in special education. In 1996, she was hired as a special education teacher and JV softball coach at Coner High School. In 2001, she accepted the position of head coach, and in 2002, the Cougars earned the school's first-ever regional title. With Kathy Ann as head coach, Coner High School has won four Midsuburban League titles and seven regional championships, including a school-record fourth consecutive this season. The Cougars also made sectional final appearances in 2012 and 2014. Kathy Ann's career mark as a head coach of the softball team at the school is 334 wins and only 204 losses, a 621-winning percentage. On behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly congratulate and recognize Kathy Ann Smith for her induction into the Illinois Softball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Jim Weaver was also called away for duty. We have another exceptional softball coach, and it is Jim Weaver from Fremd High School. He has not always been interested in coaching or even teaching for that matter, but after graduating from the University of Illinois, he started to coach some Babe Ruth baseball. He went back to school for two years to get his teaching certificate, and we are all fortunate that he did so. Over his 16-year tenure as a Fremd High School head coach of softball at Fremd, Jim's teams won 10 regional championships, three sectional titles, and three super-sectional crowns during 2009 and 2010 seasons. The Vikings, 66 wins and just 10 losses are the best two-year total in school history. Jim's team-first approach brought out the best in his student-athletes, and over the course of his career, his record stands at 395 wins and only 125 losses, a remarkable percentage of 760. Throughout the coaching career, Jim has averaged just shy of 27 wins throughout each season, every season, second to only two other programs in the Northwest suburbs during the same time period. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to recognize Jim Weaver for a remarkable career and for always doing the best that he could for all of his students and a remarkable train of success. So Jim Weaver.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate all the student-athletes here this evening. It's very nice to see and a job well done, and also the coaches that were recognized this evening. We will take a 10-minute break to allow photographs, and then we'll return for our business portion of our meeting. All right, thank you. We will begin our business portion of the meeting with our citizens' appearance and presentations. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up on the yellow speaker sheet that would like to address the Board of Education on any other topic other than the inter-fund transfers? If so, please raise your hand. We will then begin with Mr. Pacholski.
Good evening. I'm Mark Pacholski of Schaumburg, Illinois. I've been watching the D-211 Board of Education for a bit and following the topic on contract negotiations. The topic of BOE participation, collective bargaining, has been mentioned previously and put into, that would be put into future agendas, you know, such as May or June, I think was mentioned at one time in previous minutes. To date, this topic has not made it to the agenda. It leaves one to suspect that the avoidance of putting this on the agenda is intentional, perhaps by the Board of Education president or even the superintendent. The vast majority of the D-211 budget is made up of salaries and benefits. As salaries rise and we introduce salary spiking and so on, more and more burden is placed on homeowners. To date, D-211 is the leader of the top five Illinois districts of a total of 449 as of 2016 that confer six-digit pensions. The residents of District 211 deserve to have representation. Several board members campaigned in favor of BOE, Board of Education participation, or even a third-party representative, namely Anna Klimkowitz and Mr. Ed Young. Perhaps these were nothing more than campaign slogans, and that the two names have no intentions to drive the Board of Education representation in negotiations going forward. We certainly don't want to see a repeat of the District 211 style of negotiations happen here in District 211. And lastly, another suggestion is to allow the public a two-week window to review the negotiated contract prior to any Board of Education votes related to the contract acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. The teacher contract expires in June of 2018. Labor and benefits account for approximately 80% of our $250 million yearly budget. District 211 is funded on the backs of local residents, businesses, that deserve to know how their money is being spent. This school board should discuss this contract negotiation openly and at great length, because this is your job. The public has no idea where the District 211 Board of Education stands on board participation in the upcoming teacher contract negotiations. Why was talk on this issue deleted from the board's June agenda? It should have been on here tonight. I would like an answer from Ms. Musia Burke and the superintendent, Dan Cates. Finally, I would like to know which school board member would sit in on these contract negotiations and report to the public with full transparency on how things are developing. I would like an answer to that question as well, Superintendent Cates. You have had enough time to decide, so stop procrastinating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. This will bring us to our public hearing for inter-fund transfers. They will take it in two motions. The first is the suggested motion that the public hearing on the authorization of a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $19 million from the school district's educational fund to its operations and maintenance fund is now open.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have anyone who signed up to speak in regards to the yellow sheet. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move forward to our second suggested motion that the public hearing on the authorization of a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $19 million from the school district's educational fund to its operations and maintenance fund is now closed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This will now bring us to our presentation on the 60 acres property update.
In his strategic plan adopted last September, the board identified four strategic areas, one of which was organizational effectiveness. Within this strategic area of organizational effectiveness was a priority of optimizing all assets and to determine a plan for our non-performing assets with a focus on the 60-acre parcel that the district has held undeveloped for many years. The land was bought in two parcels, the first in 1966, at a time of rapid expansion across the area, both in terms of population and development. For perspective, in 1966, neither Hoffman Estates High School nor Schaumburg High School had been built. For many years, the district held the land without mention or active investigation. When we began our process, we made sure that our public was aware that we were making an active inquiry into the potential for the land, and we sought ideas from the entire community. Gratefully, we received 1,400 responses, we presented the many ideas to the board in January, and then in March, we applied a list of analysis parameters that included discerning factors such as, "Does the proposed use benefit students across the district? What is the total cost to the district to implement the idea or direction? And what is the long-range cost to the district?" At that meeting in March, the board requested that we gather information as to the specific defining features, characteristics, assets, and limitations of the parcel. At our last meeting on May 25th, we provided the board with a comprehensive report responsive to the request for characteristics about the land, and we have the engineer here tonight to answer any additional questions that you might have. Our process of gathering public input, applying the analysis parameters, and providing detailed, comprehensive civil engineering reports has been conducted openly with our public and in full concert with the informed awareness of the Village of Schaumburg. Our efforts were designed deliberately to fulfill the board's strategic commitment to organizational effectiveness by optimizing this long-held but inactive asset of the district's 60 acres. So with us tonight, we have our chief operating officer, Lauren Hummel, and Mr. Jesse Conrad from Manhard Engineering, and I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Hummel.
Well, thank you. I am very pleased to be joined by Mr. Jesse Conrad, who is the associate vice president for the civil engineering firm Manhard Consulting, as Dr. Cates just shared. We will be providing some comprehensive information on the district's 60-acre property in response to the board's recent inquiry on the usability of the land, as well as in response to the strategic priority. So beginning in the 2015-2016 school year, the district hosted a number of community engagement sessions that you probably are well aware of, and through those sessions, there was some additional information that was shared surrounding district facilities. One of the topics that was introduced at that time was the district's 60 acres. The topic of optimizing the district's assets was then further discussed and prioritized in the board's strategic plan, which then led to the development of a survey which gathered over 1,400 responses, as Dr. Cates shared. These ideas were carefully reviewed several times and were put into four main general These ideas were carefully reviewed several times and were put into four main general categories of areas of response. Those categories included retaining the land in its current state, leasing the land for a number of given potential uses, utilizing the land for a District 211 purpose or facility, or selling the land. In order for us to best analyze and collect the ideas, the board had requested additional information surrounding the usability of the land. The land survey and feasibility study that we will review with you tonight will provide you with details on the 60-acre property. Manhard Consulting provides a number of different civil engineering services, which range from site investigation through community development. So through their consultation with us, the district was able to better understand necessary steps that would help us to gather information and be able to further assess the asset that we hold. Jesse will walk you through the results of the land survey and the feasibility study tonight to better provide you with understa, with information that will provide you with a better understanding of the size of the property, with its overall usability, access issues related to the property, and certainly environmental factors as well, that will help to better define the property as we currently have it in our current state.
Good evening. So first off, the first thing we looked at in regards to the property was the current zoning of the property. So the current zoning consists of two zoning districts. The west portion of the property is in the R1 Single Family Zoning District, which requires a minimum of two-and-a-half acre lots within the Village of Schaumburg zoning ordinance. The eastern portion of the property is in the R4 Single Family Zoning District and allows for a minimum of 20,000 square foot lots, which is roughly a half acre in size. The surrounding zoning districts are all R6 Single Family with a minimum six, or excuse me, 10,000 square foot lot. The next step in regards to the analysis of the property, we conducted a ALTA survey by licensed land surveyors within our office. As part of this process, we reviewed title from the property, including any encumbrances that may exist on the property today, whether that be easements or otherwise. We looked at zoning information in regards to the current zoning of the property. We investigated wetlands, floodway, and floodplain in regards to FEMA, evidence of any use on the property, whether that be for past buildings or otherwise, and any water boundaries that exist on the property today. These items are all then contained within the ALTA survey that was prepared. This is a national set of standards that consists of these ALTA survey requirements that we were following. As you can see here on the board now, this is the overall page of the ALTA survey. The total property area was determined to be 62.036 acres, and this does include a sliver that goes all the way south to Weiss Road. As you can see on this page, what we are highlighting here is the various utility easements or otherwise that encumber the property today, most of which were for water main and/or public utilities that exist there today, or a bike path on the east side of the property and some highway easements. The majority of these, again, are for public utilities and highway or bike purposes. The next step in the process was investigating the site topography. This is available information from the Cook County GIS website in regards to the existing topography of the site. The main thing to point out in regards to the site topography is although it's very heavily densely covered in vegetation and trees, there is a lot of topographic fall across the site, in one area as much as 40 feet from the high point to the creek that exists in the northeast corner of the site. There are generally two drainage areas for the site that this slide illustrates. The northern part of the site, or the portion in the middle of the site drains to the northern part of the site where the creek exists today, and the southern portion of the site drains to the large wetland in the middle of the site that you can see designated in blue, and ultimately outfalls to an existing storm sewer at the south end of the site. The next step in the process was investigating the existing wetlands on the property, and as part of this process, we hired a wetland professional with Hay and Associates to go out and flag any wetlands that exist on the property. So the map you see in front of you is a National Wetland Inventory. It's based on aerial information, and it's the best available information until we perform that analysis. So the first step was investigating this map, recognizing that they did recognize a wetland on site. The second step was bringing Hay and Associates onboard to go out and actually walk the entire site, flag anywhere they felt there may be wetlands. And then from there, a request is sent to the Army Corps of Engineers, you can jump to the next page here, request is then sent to the Army Corps of Engineers, who also perform a site visit and help determine the jurisdiction of the wetlands. Wetlands generally fall in two categories. Those categories are isolated wetlands or Army Corps jurisdictional wetlands. The Corps here in this instance has stated that they will be taking jurisdiction over the creek in the northeast corner of the site. The isolated wetlands would fall under the jurisdiction of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, which would also be the reviewing agency for any stormwater improvements if the site were to be developed. Generally, wetlands that the Corps takes function as a waterway, as a navigable waterway per the Section 404 Clean Water Act, and are defined as such, and the isolated wetlands are more isolated in nature and not directly tributary to a waterway. Wetland mitigation is possible for both types of wetlands. The Corps process tends to be a bit lengthier, as it is a national process as opposed to local jurisdiction, but both can be mitigated, and what that means is generally that wetland credits are purchased off-site in, within the same watershed, watershed generally, excuse me, at various mitigation ratios depending on the quality of the wetland. So in regards to the wetlands, the next step would really be determining the quality of the wetlands that exist on site. This map delineates the wetlands that were located on site. There were eight wetlands in total, most of which all less than a half acre, some as small as .02 acres, so some very small in size. The large wetland in the middle of the site was roughly five-and-a-half acres, slightly below, and as I mentioned, the creek is what the Corps is stating they will take jurisdiction over in the northeast corner of the site, delineated as Wetland 1. The other aspect of wetlands that plays into development of a site is that there are buffer requirements if the site's to be developed, and that also relates to the size and quality of the wetlands, and ranges from 30 to 100 feet. Again, the wetlands can be mitigated. There is a process that must be followed in order to do so, but if they are not mitigated, a buffer is required for those wetlands. So here we have the estimated buildable area with wetland mitigation assumed for all but the creek in the northeast corner of the site and the large wetland in the middle of the site, and this estimates that the buffer requirement would be 50 feet, which assumes that the wetlands are of a standard quality in nature and not viewed as a high-quality aquatic resource. That's when you get into the larger wetland buffer. There is also the possibility to mitigate a portion of the wetland. So here in this instance, we were thinking that if the site were to be developed, that appendage of the wetland to the northeast there, as it kind of cuts off a large portion of the site and makes it a little disjointed, could be mitigated, and that would essentially be your buildable area, assuming the remainder of the wetlands on site are mitigated, and it would allow for the area directly south of the large wetland to be used as stormwater detention. There would also be a requirement for stormwater detention on the north and east side of the site as well, as it does generally drain in two different directions. So these are the two general low points that stormwater detention would make sense if the site were to be developed. The green shown on this exhibit is the various easements that we discussed on the ALTA survey that relate to public utilities and infrastructure that exist on and adjacent to the property today. There would also be setbacks as it relates to the Village of Schaumburg zoning ordinance should the site be developed, depending on what zoning district we went into would determine what those setbacks would need to be. Existing utilities on the site are readily available adjacent to and on the site. There is storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water main, and in regards to conversations with the Village of Schaumburg, there are no known capacity issues with their infrastructure in this area. We didn't get into discussing what the site would be developed as, just as whether or not their existing infrastructure has capacity to serve development, and they stated that there are no known capacity issues. They actually have a public works facility just to the north of the property, as I'm sure you're aware. So there is actually a 15-inch sanitary sewer that traverses across generally the middle of the property as well. So there is, again, readily available utilities to connect into, as you can see on this exhibit. As part of the process, we also had a Phase 1 environmental study conducted. This was performed by Environmental Protection Industries, EPI, and their report found no evidence of any environmental conditions found within the property. As part of that, they view a lot of historical information, they perform a site visit. What they're generally looking for is anything from an environmental perspective that can be recognized as an environmental condition on the property, whether that be an adjacent property having an underground storage tank or otherwise. Their report found no such instances, and that there were no recognized environmental conditions and no further investigation warranted in regards to the environmental assessment. As part of the process, we also submitted an ECOCAT to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. As part of this process, they look at the property as it relates to the State List of Threatened or Endangered Species and their known habitats, Illinois Natural Areas and Inventory Sites, Dedicated Illinois Nature Preserves, and Registered Land or Water Reserves. So generally, it's a GIS map online that you submit the location of the property, and it kicks it into their database and comes back with anything that may be within the vicinity of the site. In this instance, nothing was found, there was, consultation was terminated, and that permit is good for two years and expires in April of 2019. In regards to future determinations, the wetland jurisdictional determination, the site visit was completed by the Army Corps, but we are awaiting their official documentation in regards to the wetlands. So we, that part will be fully documented once we receive that letter from them in regards to the jurisdiction of the wetlands. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as I mentioned, had taken, stated that during the site visit, they would be taking the creek in the northeast corner of the property, but they viewed the remainder of the wetlands on site as isolated, which would fall into the MWRD jurisdiction and through their ordinance. Their archaeological assessment, should the land be developed, would be needed in regards to a Phase 1 archaeological assessment. The reason for this being that the land has generally been untouched, although it was farmed many years ago, it has been undeveloped. It's not a very intensive study, more a historical study, just to ensure that there is nothing that encumbers the property or, from an archaeological perspective, would need to be investigated further. And then soil borings. No soil borings were taken as part of this investigation. We would recommend a small number of soil borings so that you can determine there are generally good soils on the site, which is what we anticipate generally, based on the fact that all of the surrounding areas adjacent to it have been developed in this area.
So we've gained a lot of invaluable information from the study that has been conducted thus far, and in summary, we've been able to take a look at these four general categories of potential uses for the land, and we've been able to apply a set of parameters to those to be able to analyze if they are the best and optimized use for the land. The information that Jesse has been able to share with you tonight has provided with some additional information and analysis parameters that would be able to be applied to some of the ideas as well. So some examples here is that the layout that has been shown is to the potential use without mitigation of the central wetland area is not consistent with the layout of our existing school grounds, and certainly we understand that should we look to put a district facility there, that we would have a very compartmentalized section of our, or sections of our campus, and certainly we would not have the full 60 acres that are currently there for usable space, which is the amount that would be ideal for a school campus. Certainly Jesse was able to share with you some information on the grading of the land. I know we've had some discussion about some possible uses from an athletic standpoint there and feel that the, the cost that could be included with the grading of the land could be prohibitive, as well as, is the, or the general layout of including retaining walls and things of the like, to be able to make those surfaces into playing fields. Certainly, any determination that's made with the land, if it should be developed in any of the categories, two, three, or four that are listed there, would have key jurisdiction under the Village of Schaumburg. Any of those ideas would need to be certainly reviewed and approved by them as well. But I am hopeful that the information that's been shared with you this evening has been helpful and will be able to provide some data that would be further utilized in the analysis of potential, potential uses for the land in general. So with that, we would open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. Anybody would like to begin with questions?
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of the wetlands being used for retention, if you develop the rest of the property, would that wetlands be large enough in terms of what the MWRD might require, or would that have to be increased?
So stormwater detention would still be required for the property. What the MWRD looks at is that there's still water going to any wetlands that are to remain so as they're not starved off and die. So they look at it from a hydraulic perspective of, is water still going there and hydrating the wetlands so that it can survive? And there's general rules and regulations that would need to be followed in regards to that, but stormwater detention would also still be required on the property to meet the intent of the MWRD's ordinance should it be developed.
Okay, so in other words, there's a possibility the wetlands could be increased in size, or there could be a requirement to have retention as opposed to detention?
Yes, you'd likely have retention and detention, so that the MWRD ordinance that is in effect now requires green infrastructure as well as stormwater detention on site. So they're controlling both the rate and volume at which stormwater leaves a site, so both of those things would need to be addressed as part of any development of the property.
Okay, thank you.
The, for the mitigation credits, what would be the cost of five acres?
So the mitigation credits vary in cost depending on really what's available. So there's two types of mitigation credits, non-certified and certified, and there's various mitigation ratios. So depending on the quality of the wetland and whether you're, whether you're buying a certified or non-certified wetland credit, it impacts that cost, but generally that cost ranges from 80 to $120,000 per credit acre, and on a five-acre wetland, the minimum mitigation ratio would be one and a half to one. It could be as high as three to one. So it can get very expensive very quickly for a wetland of that size.
And then the key jurisdiction with Schaumburg, what other jurisdiction would we also have to go through? Would we still be going through the regional superintendent as far as development of that property?
It would have to go through both. So you'd have the Regional Office of Education that would inspect the building as a whole, but the actual use of the land would go through the jurisdiction of the village.
Is there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Obviously, since the last time we discussed the land, we have gathered additional information from the beginning to this point, and obviously have a lot to consider, talk about, and discuss. What I would ask is, what would you guys like to be as the next step? I have a suggestion, but I'd like to hear from you first. Or I could give you my suggestion. I was going to suggest, obviously, we're missing two board members this evening that come back in July with a composite of all the information that we have developed between, you know, our responses, the village, this information, and really come to concise area of like really what we can get, our four options, and if all the four options are still really realistic at what point, and if we can narrow down some of the decisions and work towards the optimization of that land. And if we as a board need any other information from Dr. Cates, let's talk about that as well, so that he can provide that for us.
Well, the only information I'd be more interested is, would be the soil testing of the property, determine whether or not it would be suitable for any large building, or would it be more suitable just for or would it be more suitable just for single-family residences?
In regards to the soil, do we have an idea of what soil testing costs and what other benefits that it would provide for us?
Yeah, so generally, somewhere between 10 and 20 soil borings would range from $5,000 to $10,000 in terms of the testing. So what would occur there is a geotechnical engineer would go on-site and drill soil borings to a certain depth, generally between 10 and 20 feet for the types of structures we're talking about or improvements on the site. That material would then go through their testing laboratory, they would prepare a full analysis of that material and provide a report back that would state the amount of topsoil on the property, whether it's clay or sand or peat, and what their foundation recommendation would be based on the soil types for a school or other building to be developed on the property.
Yeah, and it's not anticipated that we're going to see bad soils. We'll get, I'd say, 2,500 to 3,000 PSF in capacity there. We're not going to look at any type of deep foundations as far as drilled shafts or caissons. Everything could be built on a spread footing, whether it be residential, commercial, or industrial, or for a school.
Well, in this area, though, there's been a lot of wetlands, and there's been a lot of bog areas where I've seen just pockets of, where, you know, you get unbuildable soil, such as like Schaumburg High School is built on caissons. So I mean, the question comes, do we, it's just to get a better idea of what can be done, but I would probably agree with you.
Yeah.
You probably hit between 2,500 and 3,500.
And with 10 to 20 borings, you're talking maybe a boring every two to three acres. You still miss a bog pocket possibly, so I'm not sure how valuable that would be. I think that wouldn't, I don't really see the benefit of that cost.
Is there anyone else that has a viewpoint on the soil testing? As an opinion? I would tend to agree also that I don't see if we need the value of the soil testing as well. There is residents all over, and we have received information in the past that we're not looking to put a large District 11 building on it. So from that standpoint, I don't know if I feel necessary to do soil testing.
But I do still see that even with the cost of retaining walls and mitigation, that investment, I think that that could be developed into flat level terrain for somewhere in the $3 to $4 million range, based on kind of the estimates I'm hearing.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Dombrowski, that are you interested in hearing any type of cost associated with leveling the, the leveling of the land versus the grading of the land or what something like that would cost to get it to a position like that?
And I don't know if that would, sure, we could look at that cost, but I'm not sure if it would be much more than that.
I guess I'm asking the question because if it's something we need so that we can have a heartier discussion, then I want to make sure we ask for it, if it's a viable option. If I recall correctly, one of the things on the Village of Schaumburg's list was fields was one of the things that might, would not be of something that, of interest to them. So I don't know if spending more money to find out if we could put fields on there is a good idea.
Well, if we have a need for more fields due to limited space at Conan, I think if that's going to be a benefit, that's our priority and mission as a board here. I mean, it's not our place to be complacent to the Village of Schaumburg at the expense of what our students need. I mean, our mission's different than theirs, obviously.
I would agree 110% that our mission is to our students, however, that there are zoning laws within a community, and the village does have rights to that as well, to say yes and no to things as that's their jurisdiction. But I guess it asks the ultimate question, is field something that is of need and interest that we should be pursuing, Dr. Kates?
The first question that we used in our analysis parameters were, would a proposed use benefit students across the district? We have surveyed our coaches, our staff, our PE teachers. It would be very difficult for anyone other than one school to use the fields if we were to put fields in that particular location. It is at our southernmost and easternmost edge of the district. It is not central. So, you know, while it might benefit one school, you know, I would look to other potential avenues or possible solutions to benefit a given school, and certainly, when we look at a district-wide asset, that has been our emphasis and priority, is benefiting students across the district.
Right. I agree that that should be our paramount priority, but if we can't meet that priority, then obviously, we have other priorities following, and a secondary priority could be the benefit to a single school, correct? Or what would our secondary pri, I mean, obviously, that is district-wide, but expanding for individual schools, where does that fall in our priority list?
Sure, sure. So let me walk through a couple of the other analyses. So the cost was, what would be the cost involved? So if we were to add another turf field, which I have raised here before, that would benefit Conan High School directly, that we could put three or four turf fields before we even mitigated the pond. And we would not yet even be talking about clearing the trees or looking at parking facilities or structure. So in terms of, you know, those analysis parameters, we designed them so that we could have the, what we call a 360 view of it. So I would not rule out ever any benefit to students, whether it's primary or secondary. Certainly, we look for it to be primary. But even in the event that we were to look to invest that amount of money in undeveloped land, I would suggest that we bring to you other possible solutions on our campuses for, you know, for each of our schools. For what I just talked about, we could put a turf field on each of our schools, not just, not just for one.
Okay, so board, are we in agreement that we are not looking for any further information in regards to the cost of grading that land, or do you want a cost for, a cost analysis of that in order to have further discussion?
Well, I think that, for me personally, kind of identifying what we want to do with that, whether it be to keep it or not keep it, would be more of a driver for me than the cost. If we decide to keep it, then we can start looking at cost options. I don't necessarily need a cost estimate at this point.
Okay, so for, so we now, we don't need those two items. Anything else we would like Dr. Kates to bring back to us in July for the, for our discussion?
Have we, have we reached out beyond the village? Have we, I know that you've reached out to District 54 as well. Have we reached out to the Park District at all, in that area?
The Park District is aware and have been in touch with their director to just make sure he knows what we are pursuing here throughout the inquiry in the past several months.
But we've received no feedback. We've just provided them with information.
Yes.
And have we outside, how did we communicate that information? Was that sent through letters, personal discussion?
I call him directly. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
With the idea and comment about the various priorities, so if we were to sell the land, then is there other than a list of priorities that you might have now for capital expenditures as we go today? If we sold the land and received X for it, would you supplement the priority list that you already have? Would you use that to take care of additional priorities? What would you?
That is an important question that we have asked, and we do see them as two distinctly different decisions. One is, do we keep the land or not? I think is the way you mentioned it, Mr. Dombrowski. And then, so if we were to not keep the land and then we were to have proceeds, what I would offer is that we have, just as a matter of our planning, identified what benefits could be resultant at each of our school campuses to use that, those proceeds. I would propose, however, that this board would need to consider that as its own standing question. You know, what would the board want to do with those proceeds? But we have identified definite areas that have come out of both our community engagement, our strategic plan, and our notion of involving students. Each of the campuses have a little bit different feature, and so the principals have been investigating this, been reviewing this. I think you would also have other prospects to ensure that those were the selections you would want to make as a board. So, you know, if you'd like a sample list, I could tell you a sample list today, but we do view that as another separate consideration from the board.
I don't necessarily need a list, but it seems easy to be distracted by a preconceived notion that because it's this land out there, that if it would be athletic fields or something, if we sold it, you know, at each of the schools, you may or may not, you don't have to put a turf field, and you might, whatever, put in another science lab. I have no idea, but you could, it doesn't have to be athletic.
It is, it is not all athletic. There were great interest in our stages, our theaters, in our auditoriums, creating more arenas for fine arts. There were a number of different avenues. There were some, you know, some field items that we were looking at, but there were also internal object, goals for the fine arts in our schools, mentioned numerous times by each of the schools. Yep.
So what does the discussion in July look like, then? If there's not any more information to be gathered, what is?
As I understand it, I think the question is, does the board, is it the will of the board to keep the land or to sell the land based on the comprehensive information we've been providing you for, you know, about six months? So what I would suggest that we bring in for you is information that would help you to understand exactly the parameters, processes, and statutes by which we would pursue that so that you can answer that question in light of the process that it would, you know, require.
Anything additional on this topic? Thank you very much. This will bring us to our consent agenda. There's a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. This brings us to our special reports. You've been provided with the Freedom of Information Acts. Any questions on those? We also have the Illinois High School Association Letter of Appreciation and Recognition. Questions, comments? We have our workers' compensation insurance program. Any questions or comments? Post-bond issuance compliance report, this is also for your information, questions, comments? So bring us to our unfinished business. We have, right? Our unfinished business. So we have a, the resolutions directing inter-fund transfers for capital projects, life safety projects, and debt abatement. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolutions providing for inter-fund transfers of $19 million for the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund, and then from the operation and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund, effective during the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The transfer of $4 million from the operations and maintenance funds to the capital projects fund, effective during the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The transfer of $500,000 from the educational fund to the working cash fund, effective during the 2016-2017 fiscal year. The transfer of $500,000 from the working cash fund to the life safety fund, effective during the 2017-2018 fiscal year. And the transfer of $2.7 million from the working cash fund to the debt service fund, effective during the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. This brings us to our new business, the request for information for the student readiness plan. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter into a contract with theAmericanEagle.com to develop the website interface for the student readiness plan at a cost not to exceed $300,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's a lot for website development, 300K. Is something we can't do internally with our IT staff, or?
We could not do that internally. It is a comprehensive, it's going to be used by, it's more of an app. It's a, 12,000 kids are going to be on it doing all of their unique individual components.
How do we do this now?
We don't.
Was this, as far as the student readiness plan, was this part of the grant that we received?
Yes.
And how much, how much are we getting in the grant relative to this cost?
170 we have for certain, and then the grant runs out in December, and there is the prospect of additional grant funds that could come in after December.
And the benefit that we see of this is just data collection?
It was the key component of our community engagement and strategic plan. It is that which each student tracks their readiness for college and career pursuits. So it covers the five components that we believe to be critical for student readiness. It is a communication tool that all parents would have access to, for your son or daughter, and then be able to track, you know, the five key components. It becomes the central container of all that a student does, much like a high school dossier, if you will.
Right, and we're conveying that information kind of now, aren't we? We're communicating to the parents and the students where they stand through our grading processes and things, I guess. How, how does this investment improve that?
Sure, so we do issue grade report cards, but beyond that, these indicators are not as easily or integrated at all into a unified communication system. Some of them are not assessed or addressed at all. Again, it has been the key defining point of our community engagement outgrowth and the key to our strategic plan.
How much of this hinges on the teacher participation for feedback?
It is largely student-driven, so the information that we gather from the students' guidance counselors through, actually, the guidance counselors are meeting this summer to work through a lot of upgraded curriculum, group counseling it's called, and so we are able to integrate those components into the readiness plan. It really will be a powerful tool for students and parents as they pursue what comes next from the benefits they would have gained here in District 11.
Right, and so as we go through the career tracks, we develop and refine those, we're still developing those, how much of this has to be modified going forward, or does this have a lifecycle cost associated with this software?
So once this is built, and it would be built throughout the course of the coming year, the first two of the five components will be done, we're looking, you know, in the fall, and then by the, by the time spring rolls around, the rest of the five would be built. We do have a sampling of students in each of the five schools who would be working with it, so students and parents would be providing us with that feedback.
So beyond the grant, we still have 130,000 in cost, and then this, this readiness plan app product, this initial 300,000 cap is to cover just one year. Is this a two-year contract with support, three-year contract with support? What are we, what are we looking at as we define how this is invested?
So that's just for the actual building, the construction of the, of the app itself. Mark, I don't know if you want to comment on the?
There are some associated annual fees, web hosting, and ongoing maintenance agreements if we should choose to enter into that with the developer.
And if we choose not to, then we just move on? Or we do it in-house?
If we choose not to subscribe to their support service, we will look to our internal resources for that.
Okay, and that decision would come later.
Yes, so this is a construction cost.
As a, as a reminder, if you can just touch upon briefly and quickly, this is the wheel that we did in the community engagement, so that students, as they move through their high school track, is ensuring that they hit each portion of the wheel so that we're hitting the whole student, correct? I know, Mr. Young, this part of the strategic plan, and I know we spent a lot of time on it. In fact, I believe it was its own night in the engagement, so I just wanted to ensure that we really understand that, how in-depth we went into it.
Yes, we covered it actually across two different sessions of the community engagement. There were five components. We covered... We covered three of them one night and two of them another night. You know, for example, student wellness is one of the components, and as tricky as that can be to have that, we all know how important that is. And for student involvement, and these global competitive skills, the, the career path as you, as you described, and then of course, you know, an academic component. So each of those, we believe to be the central components of a student's success and welfare while they're with us. And to the degree that we can embed that right in the, the way that parents and teachers and students, many students have met to help us design it, we saw feedback from all of them, so that it is what they see when they turn on their device in the morning, and it is the runway, the throughfare, which all of their work takes place. And it really will become the central informational tool for students.
And lastly, on, ongoing, do we have any other options to other additional grants, not just for the development piece of it, but along with the maintenance or the upgrades, if you will, as they move forward? Because I'm, that's usually what happens in different designs, right? At some point, we need to upgrade or shift a little bit?
Yeah, we, we continue to pursue grants, yeah, I don't know, Dr. Schnell, if you want to talk about that, but the, the grant applications, they're not always predictable, and they don't always cover a whole cost, but we have been able to, you know, to work through additional possibilities.
The Joyce Foundation does not have a grant application. They seek out districts and areas that are doing work within college and career readiness for all students, and when they see success within that work, they continue to provide support behind that. So though we don't have a signed agreement with them for after December 1st, Dr. Hauser and myself have met with the Joyce Foundation representative. He's very pleased with our work so far. This is part of the Great Lakes Consortium that you'll hear me reference as the Northwest Suburbs, where 211, 214, Rockford, Madison, and Columbus, Ohio are all part of the Joyce Foundation, supporting college and career readiness for all students. I'm very, I'm very hopeful that we will get more money from the Joyce Foundation, but obviously, I cannot guarantee that until after December.
Great, but there's always an opportunity, so thank you. Anyone else? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Title I District Plan, the suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve Title I District Plan as presented, and authorize the superintendent to submit the plan as required on behalf of Township High School District 211.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have our resolution for our prevailing rate of wages. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education adopt the prevailing rate of wages, resolution as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Site lease amendment with the SBA Communications and EcoSite, second cellular carrier edition. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or the designee to enter into the proposed site lease amendment with the SBA Communications to extend the terms of the current contract of June 30th to 2036 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Request for proposal for the athletic training service. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the three-year contract agreement with Athletico Physical Therapy to provide assistant athletic training service at a cost of $25 per hour for the school year, athletic trainers, and $30 per hour for summer camps. Athletic trainers for each of the years ended June 30th, 2018, June 30th, 2019, and June 30, 2020, with a total not to exceed $264,400 annually for each of the three years.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Food service beverage vendor request for information. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the superintendent or the designee to enter into a contract with PepsiCo as the sole beverage vendor for our food service department, beginning July 1, 2017, with the option to renew the contract for the 2018-2019 and the 2019-2020 school year at a 3% increase per year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Do we pay the beverage tax on this as part of our contract?
We do not.
We do not?
No.
So it's at point of sale?
We?
We collect it, or how do we handle that?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, we are tax exempt.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as a government body, we, we don't pay tax.
Okay, just making sure, because?
Yes.
I know that if we put it, you know, in a vending machine?
Yep.
Or something, if, if they're selling it directly and superseding us, or if we're buying, you know, I just want to make sure that the agreement wasn't to provide vending service and that it's?
Yep.
To purchase and, okay.
Any others? Member roll call, please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Illinois Association of School Boards Annual Membership for 2017-2018. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education renew its membership in the Illinois Association of School Boards for 2017-2018, and authorize the superintendent to pay the annual dues of $22,274.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. This brings us to potential topics for future discussion. Moving on to our special reports, Mr., Mrs. Kowits is not here for NSSEO. Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to speak to education, research, and development and legislation report?
I wasn't able to attend. I believe Dr. Case was there.
So the latest is that the school funding formula has been proposed, passed by both chambers of the General Assembly. However, the governor has yet to receive it, and the, as I've communicated to you in a couple messages, the thinking here is that the bill will actually get to the governor right around the time that the general state aid checks would be first issued, and the time that the school would be about set to open. The thinking being that the governor has, to this point, indicated he would not be willing to sign the bill, given that it does have, you know, monies allocated to Chicago Public Schools. Today, the latest news is that the governor, and I guess yesterday, has asked for, you know, all hands on deck to try to get a budget passed, so now we are watching that to see what, what occurs. But the school funding formula is a component. The skeleton of that bill has protections to hold harmless school districts, but we continue to watch for the other funding mechanisms that go around it, particularly potential property tax freeze, or shifting of other funding issues, or pension calculation. So all of those items become a part of the larger whole relative to school revenues. It's all, as you all read daily, you know, not a straight line at this point.
Thank you. This will bring us to our District 211 Foundation, which is me. The end of the year is always busy for the Foundation. They are busy providing scholarships to graduating seniors, reviewing all innovation grants for educators, and they also, in the end of school year, all school year, they've got their ongoing support for the incubator program, as well as their roll-up pitch night. And their next big event is the Fifth Annual Fund Run, which is October 1st, and we're always looking for volunteers and sponsors. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything to that? Budget and Finance, Mr. LaFever?
Yeah, so we had our meeting about a week ago, covered a variety of topics ranging from the operations and maintenance fund budget, to technology budget, to our 60-acre parcel of land. We'll hear about the budget stuff here at our regular board meetings, upcoming in another two months, month?
Our next meeting would be August 9th for the Budget and Finance.
Thank you. This brings us to announcements.
Can I inject something?
Oh, of course.
In terms of, like, facilities. I walked the, the work that was done at Schaumburg High School earlier this week. I saw the progress that was going. Of course, anytime you do rehab, there's surprises here and there, but I think the progress of the construction is going real well, and I think we'll be able to open on time for Schaumburg. I also went to Fromm High School to look at the big hole that they have there, and anticipate that work to be completed on time, too. So I think we're moving along quite well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. So we had our announcements for reviews. Okay, this will bring us to entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meeting's lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter relating to an individual student, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and the setting of a price-for-sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
The Board of Education return to open session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Marilyn Burdeck, effective May 2021, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and Michael Bruce, effective May 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye. The acceptance of the sale of a student-built building-construction house. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education hereby accept the sale of the property at 30 South Shore Lane, Lake Zurich, to Chris Kemper for the amount of $495,000. Further, that the Board authorizes the superintendent to sign any documents for or on behalf of the Board to consummate the sale.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll?
Just a quick procedural question. It's on the 30-day pending their sale of their house. If they don't sell, do we have to undo this motion? Because this board action, in order to sell it to somebody outside of Chris Kemper?
Yeah, we would bring back another motion to, for another buyer.
We don't have to undo this, right? This just authorizes you to consummate the sale and do the documents.
Right, but can we sell it to somebody else if our board direction is to have them sell it to this individual that's defined?
We'd have to vote on that the next time.
Right, because it's based on?
We'd undo this action, right?
No, it'll just never occur.
It'll never occur.
Because we'll never do it. It'll just go away.
The contract will never go through.
Right, but until, but we, we have to authorize them to sell it to somebody different than, than the person that we're directing to.
We would have to do that.
But we would have to undo this action, right, in order to free him?
This action is based on the 30-day.
But it doesn't say that in our motion. That's why I'm asking, because if, it, it would just last indefinitely, because there's no termination on this action that we're taking. So if we take this action, it, it, it's open-ended, because it's not contingent on 30 days per, per what we're voting on.
Just to make sure we get confirmation, I'll get some legal counsel on that.
Sure.
For today, let's start the 30-day clock, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, but I, I mean, it would just be if we would have to undo this, or we'd have to take a motion to move away from that individual.
I think because?
Sure.
Yeah, just the signed documents, because within that is probably where that language is.